Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have a proclamation to read. United Acts of Kindness Day. It says, whereas random acts of kindness day is recognized on February seventeenth as an annual tradition of forming acts of kindness, and whereas millions of Americans focus together to change the world one random act of kindness at a time. And whereas the first United is seeking to complete three hundred thousand acts of kindness in one day through the help and generosity of residents, community leaders, churches, nonprofits, and businesses in the Moore community. And whereas United Acts of Kindness Day will inspire people in our community to come together to spread joy, hope, and love to friends, family, coworkers, and neighbors of the city of Moore. And whereas United Acts of Kindness Day positively impacts by extending love and allows us to be more kind. Now therefore, I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the city of Moore, do hereby proclaim February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three as United Acts of Kindness Day in the city of Moore.
And Mayor and Council, Deanne Gay is here to pick this up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for that. And again, that the February the seventeenth, the day of kindness, we hope and share that it reaches at least three hundred thousand acts of kindness that day. But thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item two is the consent docket. I may as approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Item C is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two in the amount of five million, two hundred ten thousand, three hundred three dollars, twenty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider adoption of resolution number forty-seven twenty-three, authorizing and calling and holding of an election in the city of Moore, Oklahoma for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of said city the question of establishing a rate for registered biweekly residential curbside recycling for four dollars and thirty cents per month, providing for an effective date and containing other provisions thereof.
Mayor and council, this is the curbside recycling proposal. The language that I discussed with Terry Hawkins, our attorney on these things, was to include the contract amount from Republic, which is four dollars and thirty cents per month. As discussed earlier, the city's intent would be to charge the residents three dollars and ninety cents. And then those that, those that qualify for the senior citizens discount would be a dollar ninety-five cents per month.
So when I, when I go to the, to the, I'm just a citizen and I go to the ballot box and I see that four dollars and thirty cents, how do I know that you're really only going to charge me three ninety?
Well, in our, in, in our information that we'll put out on our website and.
But you're assuming that everybody's going to see that.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's, that is a concern. But all the information we put out will say this is what the, this is what the city will charge. So, but the language certainly can be amended by the council. I mean, this isn't, this isn't the final draft. And Mr. Hawkins is here to answer any questions as far as any changes to make that happen, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if three dollars and ninety cents is what we're going to charge and we're going to send it out to a vote of the people and we want everybody to know what the citizens are really going to pay, I would say that we should change it to three dollars and ninety cents. I may be in the minority, but.
I agree.
If, if the, I guess it's in, as I read through the contract, the things that could affect the rate that Republic would charge us could be fuel costs and audits of the trucks if they're having to do more work in separating the trash versus the recyclable. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is in the contract that was emailed to all the members of the council. There's a, a certain allowance for those types of things. And so then, once something exceeds the allowance as far as the number of things that they have to process separately or, or things like that, then they have the ability to come back and, and increase our rate for that.
What?
How often? Do we have a set period of time that it's guaranteed to be X amount? Or they, at any point in time during that?
Five, five year?
First twelve months or whatever, they can up that rate?
My understanding is it would come with the annual renewal each, each year. So it's, it's set to be a five-year contract. The contract calls for, excuse me, four percent renew, or four percent renewal each year, which the first year, I believe, is seventeen cents. But if, if some of those other things come into play, then Republic would come and, and would expect those to be added also.
So they're going to increase it seventeen cents after the?
For the first year?
Yes.
So it's not a fixed rate for five years?
No.
Yeah, let's, how?
Now, if, and to further expand on that, even though the, the contract calls for that, that doesn't mean that we're automatically going to pass that increase on to our residents. So that would be a discussion to be had later. But at this point in time, I would not anticipate requesting that we would do that. The, the cost to the city on the seventeen cents would be fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis.
On the first year and then compounding five years down the road, I, yeah.
We have a, we have a citizen sign to speak on this. Barry Williams?
Could, and I would, maybe before the citizen comes up and speak, I'd just be curious about the legal part of the language on the ballot. I understand what the city's going to charge, but what Republic is going to charge if we were to put the three ninety? That what the city is going to charge?
I'd like to hear his, his reasoning as to why that's.
Are we, could we do, can we do that?
I mean, can we put the three ninety on there?
We put three ninety, even though it's going to be, the contract says it's four thirty, understanding the city is going to absorb some of those costs and then there's a discount for senior adults, whoever.
Well, it seems like we do that for other things. I mean, on other bond votes or projects where maybe we have some matching funds, we tell the citizens what we plan to take out as a loan for it. So I don't see how this is any different.
But just, I don't know who, who answered that. Do you answer that question?
Well, I mean, Mr. Hawkins is here to get.
What we sometimes do on our bond issue, I'm Terry Hawkins, I'm the bond counsel, help on elections for the city. What we sometimes do on our bond issues, as, as Brooks will attest, we sometimes have a not to exceed figure in there and issue a smaller amount. And so it's not always a hard and fast. If we, we might say, like the last bond issue, I think we did was three and a half million. The one we did close on November seventeenth. You know, sometimes we put not to exceed three and a half million rather than have an exact figure, depending on, you know, if negotiations are still going on with the entity that's going to buy the paper. And so on this one, I, I kind of just put the numbers that, that Brooks gave me. I had, I've hadn't had any negotiations or, you know, with the entity that's providing the recycling and, and all that, so.
So.
We could, okay, we could.
So if the, if the desire of the council is to change the ballot language to where it says three dollars and ninety cents, that would, that would require more than just changing the amount. There would be some additional language that goes along with that also, correct?
Well, we, we, it shows up several places in, in both the resolution and the ordinance. In the agenda item, like we have four thirty. And then, and then on the actual ballot proposition language, we have four dollars and thirty cents. And so if that's the council's pleasure, we can, you know, I can change that and bring it back tomorrow to get signatures.
Yeah, Terry, when do we have to have this voted on for it to go in the May election?
I think the filing date is, is, I have the calendar with me. I want to say it's in March, I believe, early March.
Personally, I would feel more comfortable tabling this until the next meeting, until we get, because I don't want to vote on something that should be or we, you know, I want to make sure we've got everything ironed out. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Yeah, I was saying, I guess that we should see how the rest of the council feels. I mean, I don't know, we're in the minority.
We're looking at a May ninth election date and it's at least sixty days. I want to say it's March fifth, March ninth, somewhere through there is when we have to file with the election board.
Okay, so if we voted on it the next meeting, but it's whatever you guys. Well, so my only concern is if we're going into this knowing that every time we renew this, it's going to go up four percent. I think we need to tell the people that voted on it. Yeah. That that's what's happening. I mean, because the worst thing we can do here is not full disclosure, not full disclosure, so. Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know whether that's good or bad, but that's just my, my gut feeling. Yeah, I agree with you, Louis.
So you want to make that as a tabling motion?
I, are you guys okay with tabling? Well, I'll make a motion to table.
So I'm okay with tabling it, but I do want to have more discussion. I'm, I'm great with saying that it's going to increase four percent every year if, and that's what's in the contract. Completely understand that and agree. Also, we'll say lots of our things increase and we vote on them at this meeting for increases. I mean, when the recycling failed immediately following, we had to increase the price of the second trash can, I think, by three dollars and twenty-five cents, something that was very close to the number on the recycling. So we do increase things on a regular basis with, with disclosure and notes or that type of thing. But I just want to make sure that is very clear and apparent across the board.
Sure, and, and the only, the only holdback that I have on that comment is the fact that you have a choice as to whether you get that second trash can. This is a no choice thing. And so full disclosure is absolutely a must here.
And maybe that was a poor example because we do increase prices on things that you, on everything. I think that that was one that stands out, but we do.
When we know, when we know about them is different than when we have a need. Because we know that ever, every year for five years, this is going to go up four percent.
But we don't know if it's going to go up for the citizens by four percent because our city manager just said we could potentially.
Not to exceed, that's where I think this language of not to exceed comes into play here, so.
Well, but, I mean, the, I guess I'm a little confused as far as the, the not to exceed four dollars and thirty cents. I mean, that's not the proposal that's, that's in front of us. Now, as far as the, what we would charge the residents, I mean, that's, that's, that's up to the will of the council, so.
Yeah, yeah. I would, I would, I would second the table motion and we need to have some more discussion.
Okay, we have a motion as second to table. Would you call for that vote, please?
So, hold on, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we need to have more discussion, I think we need to have the discussion today. If we're tabling it to correct the language to say not to exceed four dollars and thirty cents or put three dollars and ninety cents based on what we're going to charge the citizens, then I think that we need to iron that out now. I don't think there's probably a better place. Yeah, iron out, what are we expecting? So Louis said he wanted more discussion on it.
Oh, I see.
If we want more discussion, I think it needs to be had now. We need the language corrected. I'm all for tabling it at this moment.
So is the, Terry, is the, is it?
I want, I made a motion for the language, so.
So is, it is simple in the, in the ordinance and the, and the ballot just to say not to exceed three dollars and ninety cents and then that covers everything?
I think you said not to exceed four thirty is what, is what.
Well, the, the, I don't think we can say that in the ballot, so.
Because it's going to go up.
Because it's going to go up.
Yeah, so, but for the, for the residents, the, the intent right now is for the residents to pay three dollars and ninety cents. So is it as simple in the, in the ordinance and the ballot language just to say not to exceed three dollars and ninety cents and then that covers everything that needs to be covered? Or is there, is there some additional language that needs to be modified also? Or do you just need some time to look at it?
I think we just need to, we need to make the changes in both the resolution and the ordinance to reflect that. So not to exceed three ninety is the, is what we need to put, okay?
Do we need to, does there need, are we concerned about the four percent for the next five years?
So you're saying leave it at four thirty because it's going to go up and then that's, that covers?
I'm not emotional on the four thirty.
No, I'm just asking, yeah.
The, the four percent every year is the part that I'm concerned about.
If we're going to charge three ninety, could we say not to exceed three ninety for until this date? Then with a four percent increase or something like that? And that's probably on you, Terry, that's.
I mean, because as Brooks said, if we charge at start, it passes, we charge them three ninety and the first year rocks along, we get the seventeen cent increase and we choose not to pass it on, they're going to pay two years at three ninety. But then what happens that, that next year? So now we're up to thirty, thirty-four, almost thirty-five cents per customer. And, and at some point, we're going to have to start passing some of that along. And I think it, before the, before constituents vote on this, they need to know that.
I agree.
Do we want to have him come up and speak?
Do what?
The citizen.
Oh, yeah. Barry Williams, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Yep, Terry, thank you.
On that four percent, and someone up here said we could even have an additional from that because of some type of recycling cost. So you're saying a minimum of four percent?
That's what we know.
That's what you know. It could go up fifteen percent, it could go up to thirty percent. We don't know that. But I'm wondering why in the world?
Go ahead and state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barry Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street, Moore, Oklahoma, seven three one six oh. Sorry, I went through all that, but I figured y'all probably knew we live in Moore. But why have we not, and I talked to Brooks today. He said, because Republic is an add-on service, we don't have to get competitive bids. We don't know if there's somebody out here that can do something better at a lower cost than Republic Services. Do we?
I tend to agree with him.
We have looked at it marginally, okay? We, we have looked at it and talked about it, but not in depth, no.
I mean, we're talking about millions of dollars here that's, like I came here last month and talked to you, that the city of Mustang, it's a five-dollar charge. You have to sign up for a year. You don't have to recycle if you don't want to. So there are other options, other venues out there that are doing recycling, not just Republic Services. And I think before we start throwing this at the people, we need to make sure that we're spending our money in the appropriate manner if we're going to do recycling. It's not something that we can just go around here and go, well, we already got Republic, so we might as well just use them. That's not right. That's not spending my money judiciously.
I don't disagree with you at all as far as going out there. But as far as Mustang goes, I don't know if we know. Maybe their city helps cover part of that cost and that's why it's at five dollars. I don't know, but, but I agree with you on.
But that's still my money.
Right, right, yes, I.
Still your money.
Like I said, I don't disagree with, maybe there is something that.
Just because you're covering part of the cost, it's coming out of something that we could be using for something else. So don't say that, well, the city's covering the cost. It's not the city, I am the city. Everybody out here is the city.
But I meant, that's why they're, why it may be at five dollars, not at, you know, for, to have their all opt-in, yes.
Right, so, but we haven't looked at it.
Right.
We haven't got it and said, hey, let's get some bids from some other companies out there. Let's get some bids from Enviro Disposal, whoever else does the recycling around here, and said, this is what we're planning on doing. How much is it going to cost us? Is it going to go up every month? Are, are we going to have some more fees on it? And that way, we can know that, hey, Republic Services made the absolute best bid out here, or there's this other company that's going to do it, like we said in two thousand sixteen, for three dollars a month. That's.
And that was Republic.
It wa, it was Republic.
And that was Republic. But there may be another company out there. We don't know because we didn't, we didn't take any bids. We just said, hey, it's an add-on service, it's a lot easier on us, we're just going to do it that way. So I think we need to take a more in-depth look at it. I'm glad that y'all found out about the four percent increase plus whatever else. You know, if they decide that the price of gas goes up to four dollars a gallon, then they're going to start charging each one of our residents another twenty-five cents a month, plus the four percent next year. We need to do some more diligence, looking and seeing what's the best option for the people of Moore, Oklahoma, when it comes to recycling. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item number, okay.
Well, we need to vote on the.
Vote on table.
A tabling motion?
Yeah.
Is that what, okay.
We've got a tabling motion on the floor.
Did you, okay, but did you guys want to go ahead and do some more talking about this? One more discussion? Is that what I heard?
Well, just, Brooks, you understand what you need to do? Are you clear on that?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the, if the item is tabled, then it can be brought back with the three dollar and ninety cent language. I don't think there needs to be a motion for that because it's, it'll be essentially a new item, so.
But we don't need to vote to table?
Yeah, we do need to vote to table, yeah. Would you call for the tabling vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item is tabled. Item number four is consider adoption of ordinance number one zero one eight two three of the city of Moore, Oklahoma, amending section one seven dash two oh nine, chapter two of part seventeen of the code of ordinances of the city of, excuse me, Moore, Oklahoma, by adding a required biweekly residential curbside recycling and establishing a rate thereof providing for effective date of, for said increase sub the voter approval and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Since this is a companion item, this should be tabled also.
Motion to table. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for that vote, please, to table?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item is tabled, excuse me. Item number five is considered the appointment of Kathy, Kathy Griffith to the Moore Urban Renewal Authority to fill the remaining term of David Roberts due to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Mayor and council, as you know, Dave Roberts unfortunately passed away recently and we're trying to fill his seat on the Urban Renewal Authority. And myself and the, or attorney Emily Palmerway, both believe that Kathy would be an excellent choice to fill this seat, recommend approval.
Make a motion, we appoint Kathy Griffith to the Moore Urban Renewal Authority.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, you okay with this? Okay, thanks. I thought I'd better ask first. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome back.
Item number six is consider the final plat of Urbansky Farms, section one, located in the south, we, excuse me, the southeast quarter, section nineteen, township ten north, range two west being north of southeast nineteenth street and west of Sunny Lane Road application by Farzani Development Company, LLP.
Mayor and council, this site is located north of southeast nineteenth street and west of Sunny Lane Road. It is approximately twenty-seven acres in size with sixty-two residential lots and three common areas. This is a, results in a density of about two point three lots per acre. The site is zoned R one as a planned unit development. The planned unit development granted a fifty-foot wide minimum lot width in exchange for the following amenities. It does provide for divi median entryway from South Sunny Lane that would be landscaped with thirteen trees and twenty-four shrubs. It does include a pool, poolhouse, cabana, and playground on the west side of the development with thirty-eight trees and twenty shrubs and an automatic irrigation system for all the required landscaping and the residential exterior aesthetics with a minimum of sixty percent brick rocker stone. Stormwater detention for this development is proposed with the existing pond on the west side of the site. It also has a smaller detention pond on the south side of the site. FEMA floodplains and floodways are located along the southern boundary of the site. However, the applicant is not proposing to develop lots within the floodplain. A bridge box is proposed across the floodplain that would connect the Urbansky Farms development with the Cypress Creek development to the west. Access is proposed by the divi median entryway from South Sunny Lane and by southeast seventeenth street that would be through the Cypress Creek addition. And the southeast seventeenth street is required to be built to collector street standards. Planning commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon the inclusion of a traffic calming technique along Olive Way, which was a north-south street that ran through the development. And a roundabout has been included that would line up with the proposed recreational amenities on the west side of the property. This property has been used in the past as a dump site for wood chips. The west half of this phase of development are affected by these wood chips. They must be removed and field dirt brought in to establish adequate build sites. And to ensure suitability for home construction on these affected lots, the applicant will be required to provide a report on the removal of the wood chips and detailing the adequate mitigation measures for development for the site. The envisioned Moore twenty forty plan calls for this location to be open space residential. Land uses in this category include existing neighborhoods with large lots or new neighborhoods with smaller lots, but feature significant open space. It does allow for developments up to three lots per acre and thirty percent open space. With this subdivision taken as a whole, the preliminary plat did preserve the floodplain in the property and provided with approximately thirty-nine percent open space and a density of three point two nine lots per acre. Because the final plat is in conformance with the approved preliminary plat, there is no amendment to the envisioned Moore twenty forty plan that is necessary. And staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Who is the developer for Cypress Creek?
It is a similar developer. I don't think it's under the same company name, but it is part of the same group.
Okay, so the expectation of the two spaces connecting isn't a surprise to anyone?
No, and they have the same engineer.
Okay, of convenience, okay, okay.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item six.
Okay, thank you.
A second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of ordinance number one zero one nine two three, amending part twelve, chapter five, article K, section twelve dash six one three of the Moore Land Development Code by amending the transportation impact fee schedule for residential retail and commercial developments.
Mayor and council, every so often, staff reviews the transportation impact fees to ensure that the fee is adequate for our capital improvement projects. With the arterial roadway construction costs increasing significantly over the past several years, the current fees we determined were too low. So staff worked with T E C to recommend a number that would take into account the inflation that we've seen and more adequately address our, our costs for road, arterial roadway construction. On page one oh six of your packet, I have a list of all of the current fees, our proposed fees. And I've also included a column for the city of Oklahoma city fees, although this isn't exactly apples to apples. Oklahoma City does theirs a little bit differently, so, but I got it as close as I could. So for a single-family R one house, the current fee is six forty-seven. We're proposing to increase that fee to nine hundred dollars per lot. These are paid at the development, the, the time of development. So when a developer files a final plat, that is when we collect these fees. The builders themselves are not required to pay these fees. Multi-family, it would be going from four fifty-three per unit to six hundred a unit. And we do offer a discount for senior housing. The current fee is two thirty-six a unit and the proposed fee is three hundred dollars per unit. All of the fees did go up, but I just want to call your attention to the gas and convenience store fee and the restaurant, fast food, fast casual fee. These fees did go up, but we have seen a trend of. Um, these fees, uh, did go up, um, but we have seen a, a trend of, uh, having very small building footprints and relying more on drive-through service. Um, so we felt that it was important to establish a minimum, um, in order for us to recoup the, the money that we would be spending. So, we're proposing a minimum for gas stations of five thousand dollars. Um, otherwise it would be five dollars and fifty cents per square foot. And for the fast food or fast casual, we propose a minimum of four thousand dollars, um, or a per square footage fee of four dollars. Um, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item number eight is consider approval of an agreement with Frees and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred forty dollars for professional services for phase one of the lead and copper rule revision, L C R R compliance program mandated by the EPA.
Mayor and council, um, the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, uh, submitted, uh, the regulations and revisions to the lead and copper rule, uh, setting new standards and removing harmful levels of lead and copper from drinking water. Um, this went into effect in, this, uh, went into effect on December sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one. And much as we discussed earlier this evening, we talked about mandates and unfunded mandates. This is something that we have to do, uh, and all communities have to do. Uh, you know, basically the revisions will require cities and water utilities to take a significant action to protect customers, um, from the health risks associated with lead and copper. What we're asking is to approve this, uh, this is essentially phase one of the process. And the phase one would include, um, it's really a risk assessment and we would receive a report that, um, addresses all the data collection that we're gonna have to do to be able to prove and put together a plan on how we're gonna approach to keep the citizens, uh, from, uh, uh, receiving water that would be, uh, contaminated with lead and copper. And so with that, we'd recommend that you approve the contract for phase one so we can move forward and get the planning process, uh, on its way.
All right.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from the council on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie? Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of amendment number two for Frees and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for additional services for the northeast Twelfth Street reconstruction project from I thirty-five to Eastern Avenue.
Mayor and council, uh, this amendment is essentially, the scope of the project as, as we started with Twelfth Street was really more of a rehabilitation type project, replacing panels, making some improvements, providing a, a, um, bicycle, a pedestrian pathway. Um, then when we received the grant, um, from ACOG, um, it, it went from a three million dollar project to a nine million dollar project. And really, and what that entails is of the nine million, we're only gonna have to pay one point eight of the estimated cost right now. So, uh, basically, we're gonna be spending less dollars than the federal government and the state will be paying for the additional improvements. Uh, some of those improvements that, you know, we've, we've added, uh, uh, we're, uh, we did the geotechnical, uh, uh, survey and, and basically what the soil sample said and i- is that the, the deterioration of Twelfth Street is, is, uh, further along than we thought. And so they recommend that we should replace it actually the entire way. And we're gonna be able to do that with the grant money and what we had, uh, from the original. So, uh, and, and we're adding landscaping, uh, getting some concept designs, uh, included into the design portion. Um, you know, we were going to, as an example, you know, in the, in the beginning, we were gonna not extend the box, um, next to Sonic, the, the drainage box, uh, and, and, uh, reduce the ten-foot wide trail down to four foot to get past it. But now we're gonna be able to extend it and get a full bike trail, the entire distance. So, with all of those changes, uh, there's, it's a significant change in design too. And so we would recommend you approve amendment one or two, uh, number two, so we can move forward.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from the council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number ten is consider approval of change order number two with SAC services incorporated in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for construction of additional parking as part of the Turner Avenue widening and reconstruction project and increase the contract project time by an additional twenty calendar days for delays and for construction of the additional parking.
Essentially what this is, is there's a couple items that we've added. Um, we, we did an additional driveway at the corner of.
Part of this is my fault.
Uh, no, but, uh, we put in an, uh, extra parking space at the corner of, uh, uh, Turner and Main, um, because of, we, we wanted to, uh, reduce, uh, the ability of an individual to back out of his driveway onto Main Street. It's just not conducive to be backing out onto a four-lane facility. So we, we added an additional parking, 'cause he originally had enough space for three. Uh, but now it's, it's off of Turner where he can park and drive in and out and, and work. The other is the Urban Dog House. Um, there, uh, they have off-street parking for part of their development. And so, uh, since we were in the, in the process of constructing the street, it makes more sense to have a, uh, have our contractor actually do the work, um, because we can utilize that parking also, 'cause it is off-street parking. Um, and it just made more sense to have our contractor do that. And the cost of the, him to do that is, uh, was the eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And we've worked out a deal with, uh, the owners of the, uh, Urban Dog House where they'll pay fifty percent.
Just to, I'm looking at the, a docket and I don't see, where is the off-street parking next to the Urban Dog House? Is that?
Yeah.
It's on the very, it's, 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 it's on, um.
A side street just west of it?
No, it's not on a side street, it is on Turner Avenue.
On Turner?
Okay.
It's on Turner Avenue and it's just before you get to Southeast Fourth Street.
So it is just west of the building? It's not a side street, but it's, it's not Fourth Street?
It's just, no, it's not Fourth Street, it is on Turner Avenue and it is on the east side of the building, of the, of the, the dog care.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, yeah, 'cause we're not going behind in building a parking lot on private property. It's on the right of way of Turner Avenue.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure no one heard Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is consider approval of modifications to the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual by amending article two, employee activities by prohibiting smoking in city vehicles. Article three, recruitment and selection by adding cleanup and language and removal of unnecessary sections. Article five, leave of absences by establishing rules and procedures for donation of sick leave and the use of donated sick leave and by adding cleanup, language and removal for unnecessary sections. And article six, performance evaluations and performance increases by adding cleanup, language and removal of unnecessary sections.
Mayor, I'm sorry you had to read all that. Uh, we're, we're requesting this be tabled.
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a tabling motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
So.
Item, item twelve is consider authorizing the purchase of twenty-six custom waste receptacles, pizza box bins from Clean River Recycling Solutions in the amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars seventy cents as the lowest and responsible written quote.
Mayor and council, this is a budgeted item and part of the trash container update for the parks. This purchase is for containers for large items such as pizza boxes or party supplies that do not fit into the regular trash containers. These large containers will be placed at the pavilions where family reunions and parties are held consistently. Recommend approval.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is consider the budget purchase of a chassis clack cab to support the body of a new bucket truck from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of forty-five thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars using state contract number S W zero three five.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, this is to purchase a new bucket truck to replace an old one who, which has been in the shop more than it has actually been used. And, um, the, um, bucket truck is used by not just public works, but almost all departments in the city, so. Um, the truck is available for purchase and so we don't have to wait, uh, for a long time. And then item fourteen, which is a companion item, is once we acquire the truck, then we can take it to have the body placed on.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is consider the budget purchase of a bucket truck body from Viking Clothes, uh, Cl- Chives, excuse me, Midwest Incorporated in the amount of one hundred eight thousand five hundred dollars using Sourcewell Contract number zero six two 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 dash V C M.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fifteen is consider the budget purchase of a, uh.
Hyundai.
Hyundai, is that how you say that?
Yes, sir.
Hyundai, uh, thirty-five L dash nine A forklift from G W Van Campbell Company in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars seventy cents using Source, Sourcewell Contract number zero nine one five two dash eight C E.
Mayor and council, currently the city does not have a forklift in its fleet at all. So anything we do that requires a forklift, we have to rent. And sometimes, um, it takes time, it costs a lot of money. Um, this, um, forklift is available within the next thirty days. It's already on the ship.
Motion to approve?
Well, second to the motion.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number sixteen is consider the budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Polaris Ranger Crew five seventy S P side-by-side U T V from Luther Brothers Incorporated in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars ninety-seven cents uh, with a signal lights and tag mount kit using Sourcewell Contract number one two 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 zero zero P S I.
Mayor and council, currently the animal control officers, um, don't have anything that they can use in areas where, um, it's not accessible by their trucks. So, um, this will be used for patrol in the parks and fields that their trucks cannot get to. And, um, we recommend approval.
I guess they already have a way to get it there, or would they drive it there? Is that the purpose of a tag and all that?
Yes.
So they would just drive it and then drive it?
I think it has to be tagged because it's street legal.
Yeah.
It will be street legal.
Okay.
Are we getting any kind of trailer or something in case it requires more of a driver?
Yes, that will be in the upcoming budget.
Okay, perfect.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seventeen is consider resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-three adopting a substantial amendment, uh, to the twenty-twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and authorize the mayor to submit the amended plan to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Uh, mayor and council, the twenty-twenty-two action plan was originally approved, um, July eighteenth and approved by HUD on September twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two. This year's public improvement project consisted of the sewer line replacement and the Armstrong addition. This project did not utilize a hundred and, approximately a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, the Parks Department has requested C D B G funding for the construction of a pickleball court at Kiwanis Park. This project is located in a low-income area and is identified in the city's consolidated plan, making it an eligible project to fund. This funding includes the construction of the court, fencing surrounding the court and lighting installation. And this amendment would consist of adding the Kiwanis Park Pickleball Court to the twenty-twenty-two action plan and moving the leftover funds from the Armstrong sewer line replacement to this project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eighteen is consider authorizing the budget purchase of ten Motorola A P X six thousand series handheld radios from Motorola Solutions in the amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars ten cents using state contract number three seven four three five O M E S, Oklahoma Southwest, oh, one oh five three M.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a budgeted item for ten handheld radios. This will allow our officers to protect our citizens with the most up-to-date features. Uh, staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham? Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority meeting. Item nineteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more public works authority meeting held January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of one million, one hundred fifty thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars, twenty cents.
Most approve.
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie? Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number twenty, oh, excuse me, we will recess the more public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting at this time. Item number twenty is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three in the amount of three hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents.
Six hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote for that?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more risk management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item twenty-one is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up to speak.
Oh, I.
Oh, do we?
Yeah, we passed one back.
We passed it, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
I think it was, is it, is it here?
Oh, good B. Thank you.
There, it's right there.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
Nope, it's good.
Al Jones? Thanks for pointing that out.
Yep.
If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My full name is Allah Jehovah Jones. Everybody just calls me Al and I didn't want you guys to butcher my name, so I just put Al on it.
Thank you.
And my address is three-three zero eight Southeast Eightieth Ninth Street, trailer two-six-eight. I actually don't live in Moore, but I had an encounter with more police. That's the only reason why I'm here. Um, do I just?
Yep, just tell us, yep, whatever you'd like.
Share story.
Um, basically, I'm very upset with the more police and I'm not like most people. To be honest with you, I'm not scared of them at all and I really want to give it to them the way they deserve after what they did to my family, but you know, the law is the law. Um, I filled out, I basically, what did I do? I um, I wrote a letter to your city manager and your chief because frankly, I've already gone through a police complaint process before with Blake Green back there and they just, they just basically say the police didn't do anything wrong. So I just, they, I just didn't want to go through that nonsense and just looked at it like, hey, I'll ask somebody that's not involved in the police that has control over it, can you look at it? And basically, um, I took my daughter to the hospital for a mental health evaluation and the hospital wasn't very clear and violated our um, religious rights because like, I'm not Christian like everybody else, you know, hence the name. But um, like, they, they let you nosedive into it and then like, after you say certain things that make you subject to a forty-three A law about like, if your child feels a certain way, then they have to take them or something. But they sent my daughter to a co-ed place where that's completely against our religion. And your, your officers basically, to me, I looked at it like they basically kidnapped her. They were very rude at the hospital. When I was talking to one of them, he actually had the audacity to crack his knuckles when we were speaking, to the point where I had to say to him, are we there yet? What's up? Um, because like I said, I don't really avoid confrontation and like, they just made me that angry. Then another officer came, a Dean, and he looked like his vest was giving him problems and I'm, but he was very rude and I constantly had to hold back from charging him. And um, like, cause he, when the guy had cracked his knuckles, he, Dean had said, well, you have your ways, he has his way. And I'm thinking to myself, what in the world does being Muslim have to do with a guy being disrespectful and cracking his knuckles while you're speaking? Like, I'm supposed to be in distress. We're talking about my daughter and you guys are about to send her to some co-ed spot where there are no males in my family. And I respect you guys, you know, I even put up Christmas lights so I don't come across as the angry Muslim, you know what I mean? So it's very hard not to attack because most people, to be honest, like, I used to be in the army, so like, that's why they don't scare me. Like, they come across as like, weak, sorry. Like, I know you guys may have a different opinion, but that's my opinion from dealing with them. They only bother the little black guys that can't handle themselves and it really frustrates me. But anyway, uh, my, my main issue is the disrespect. Like, they, first the officers disrespect us there. Then they, I told them, hey, I want to follow. Like, this is a part of our religion now. Then um, they um, do say they have some sort of shift change. So first, Dean and the cracking knuckles officer speed off with my daughter in the car. And like, you guys had another officer, he was pretty cool. And um, he's the one that came back with me because I didn't know you guys were even going back to the station first. I thought we were just gonna ride there. They didn't tell me about, about a switch off, no nothing. So I get there, the nice officer and me are talking. Then I run into, then uh, Officer Johnson, like, a lieutenant comes out. He has a very pissy attitude, sorry, but there. Now, he act like I had a Johnson and his wife or something. That's how he was treating me. Like, he was that pissy. And um, he came out in a very negative attitude and said, are you the guy waiting? They already left. So it's funny, he just asked for, he just asked for radios to help the community. I had asked that Lieutenant Johnson, hey, can you get on your radio because you guys were supposed to wait for me? He says, pss, no. So then that caused a real bad argument between us next time where the chump just stood behind the glass, which really made me angry. But anyway, um, um, like, they're, they're for the radios for the community, but when the community says, hey, can you use the radio because you guys made a mistake, I get a no. So um, then I get up there and if I'm, if I'm that much, if they view me as some sort of danger, why would you let me go to the mental handicaps? Why would you let me go to a place like that, not more in Oklahoma City, no, nothing like that? So obviously, I wasn't a danger. They just felt like being jerks. And um, I asked my daughter what happened because tolls, no, none of them would tell me, why did they leave? And then they, my daughter tells me that this Jalen Adams, um, guy, um, mind you, he's supposed to be some youth pastor. So he knows he how to deal with parents. And this Jalen, I, I used to be an intel analyst, so that's how I pretty much know everything about people that I encounter. Um, it's just a bad habit. And um, but he, um, she tells me he's laughing with the officer as they like, basically treat her like she's some, some criminal instead of somebody that went and seeked help. But then, you know, it's foreign citizens. Fuck, I'm, I'm sorry, um. But um, my, my question is, why are they, why are they policing themselves? That just comes across as a really dumb idea. I don't trust them. That back-to-blue stuff, like, I'm from a gang-infested neighborhood in New York and I know gang when I see it. Like, those are gang members with that back-to-blue nonsense. Everybody that was doing that whole Black Lives Matter stuff, I mean, did they ever not pay their taxes? Everybody still had to back them. Everybody. I can't go to Walmart and tell Walmart, hey, don't, I'm not paying taxes because it's going to them. That's just not realistic. So everybody backs them. Like, it's pretty redundant. It's like me calling myself Black Al and everybody could clearly see. But I, I, I know that gang stuff and he brought it because he was like that with Cleveland County when I had a disrespect, a disrespectful officer then, where basically they police themselves and come back and tell a citizen, nothing happened. And you get sick and tired of it. Like I said, I'm not gonna end up in some situation where they're killing me. That's just out. But I do run into encounters where they're disrespectful. And you guys are always, I, I read the thing where they're talking about they're courteous and all this other stuff. How come I didn't experience that? How come my family couldn't experience it? And another thing, why are they using police cars to take the kids? If they have unmarked vehicles, why treat them like criminals? Like, this is mental health. It is not, like, they aren't criminals. My daughter's never done anything wrong in her life other than come and tell people that she had an issue, obviously. Which now she wants to reject all of this getting help because of all that happened. So now, like, we have to deal with that. But my question, why are they allowed to police themselves? That makes no sense.
Well, you know, I would just, uh, Alan, just, I would, it's gonna be hard for any of us to really comment because we don't know the entire circumstances of everything that happened. And I do, I think, I do remember getting an email and reading through that. And the only thing that I would ask is, Brooks, maybe you could just, look, I know there's personnel things that we're, aren't privy to uh, because of federal laws, but if you could maybe look at the investigation the police department did and just give us a summary of what had occurred and what the outcomes were.
Sure.
And I'm, you know, I, I have confidence in our police department.
I'm sorry.
And there's, there's, uh, you know, but they're not perfect people and, but we do have really high expectations for them.
Funny you say that. One of the officers came out and said to me, hey, man, um, we, we were having a bad day. But you know, the lady that's at McDonald's that's, um, you know, just had a baby and the baby was giving her such a hard time, she can't be rude to you. She's gonna lose her job, isn't she? So enough with the excuses for them.
Yeah.
They are adults and let's treat them like that.
Okay. Well, our city manager will look into it and then he'll get back with us and if there's something that needs to be looked at, I promise you, this council will.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Make sure that happens.
That, that's all I ask. I, I just, I'm not comfortable with them policing themselves.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any items from the council trustees?
Just have a couple of quick things. Uh, I noticed, I was just driving through the Ward Two today and the strip mall over Twelfth and Janeway, the one that's all boarded up, um, that sits behind the Lazy Donkey and uh, it had a con- condemnation notice placed on it February first. So what's, what happens from that point forward? How long do they have to address it and try to fix it?
Uh, there was a meeting, uh, I believe last week and so they've got, uh, they've got a plan to rehabilitate that facility along with the car wash and so we will see if they do that and if not, then we will continue uh, with the process.
And how, how long do they have to make, make movement on it?
Uh, Elizabeth, how long is, is it sixty days?
It's several stages.
Okay.
They're gonna have a review, I believe it's in a month.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, yeah.
Well, I'll just, I'm gonna follow it closely because it's, it's bad and even, I noticed that doors had been pried open, so I'm sure people are sneaking in there and doing whatever, so. I was glad to see that we have condemned it and started that process. And then the second thing that I noticed today, I was driving, took I thirty-five and Fourth Street exit and going north on the service road and it looks like ODOT mode. Uh, normally they picks trash up and then mow, but I don't think they did this time. They went through there and mowed and it, it looks awful.
Okay.
And if you could maybe reach out to ODOT and see if they plan on coming to pick it up or drive it yourself because it's really bad. Thank you.
Okay, anybody?
So, I mean, you started down to one lane or one direction. Can you give a little bit of information just to make sure that we're all clear on what that meaning? That eastern down to one lane, it's from night, I'm gonna mess it up if I try to say it, repeat it.
So basically from Thirteenth Street, between Thirteenth and Twelve.
And that's southeast? Southeast Thirteenth and Twelve?
Yes, southeast Thirteenth and Twelve to Nineteenth Street. Um, has been open, um, or has been closed on the, on the east side. The, the northbound two lanes has been closed. So what they're going to do, and everybody's been driving on the southbound lanes.
They're gonna swap them?
One lane each direction. From Thirteenth Street, between Thirteenth and Twelve and Nineteenth Street, and it's prior before, they're gonna flip the traffic over to where it's one lane in each direction on the northbound traffic. And the, and so from Nineteenth or south of Nineteenth, they'll go ahead on, on the, on the northbound side. And then when we get to Thirteen.
It goes back over to the south.
They'll switch back over to two lanes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was confused too because, yeah.
I read it as it was only going to go one direction and I.
One lane each one.
One lane.
One lane.
That's fine. That, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Somebody reached out to me and said, I mean, what does this mean to me? Can I still drive both ways? And I said, you can still drive both ways. And I said, okay.
Only one way at a time.
Only one way. Well, yes.
I'm fine with that. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I will give a, a thank you because I know that Jerry, I've had a ton of conversations with citizens recently on uh, the Eastern Avenue project, mostly when it affects them coming out of their neighborhoods and that's heavy in word one. So Silver Star's done a great job that when there's a complaint as far as it getting low and bodying that part.
Silver Star, is it?
It's Alan.
It's Alan Kinturk.
Okay, um, what, sorry, uh, so I will use that because that's not what I, I haven't seen them out there. But um, they have been very responsive about leveling it out and making sure they can get back out.
Well, and also, I wanted to thank Jerry because on the, the one that I called you on, on the, the parking and everything, everybody was just fantastic on that. Uh, made that homeowner extremely happy.
Good.
And so everything went like clock.
Anybody else? Any items from the city manager?
Nothing at this time.
All right.
Item twenty-two is executive session, section three oh seven, title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to consider the following items. Item A is discuss considering if deemed appropriate taking possible action regarding pending tort claim filed by Earth Angel LLC and Emerald Corporation LLC represented by Nation, Nations Law Firm LLC against the city of Moore. An authorization for legal council staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, excuse me, three oh seven B dash four.
Make a motion. We convene the executive session.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Call for that vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Well, Peter has a court, but he told me all about it the first time he called. He told me all about it the second time he called. He told me all about this the second time he called.